I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. If you would, please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to reply of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff. Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Milner is excused. Mayor Zaring.
Present. Thank you. We have four.
So ceremonial matters. Up next, we have, it's that time of year for the Buckle Up Phone Down program. I'm going to, I'll read the proclamation, and we're going to have you all come up here. We'll get a good photo, and we'll have a couple of them prepared to talk about. Really? Is everybody going to say something? No? All right. Okay, so Buckle Up Phone Down, October 30th, 2024. Whereas the Missouri Department of Transportation and Missouri Coalition for roadway safety are challenging the community to buckle up and put your phone down. And whereas the challenge is simple, when you get into your vehicle, into any vehicle, buckle your safety belt, and if you are the driver, put your cellphone down. And whereas over 64% of fatalities in 2023 Missouri traffic crashes were unbuckled, up 5% from 2022. And whereas traffic crashes are the leading cause of death for people between the age of 15 and 20, with distracted driving being one of the primary causes. And whereas by buckling up and putting your phone down, you will do your part to help make Missouri's roads safer and save lives. And whereas approximately 70% of drivers using cellphones in Missouri traffic crashes were 22 years of age or older. And whereas it is time to join the movement and stand up and be counted, take the challenge Now therefore, I, Mike Zaring, Mayor of Harrisonville, Missouri, do hereby proclaim Friday, October 30th, 2024, as Buckle Up Phone Down Day in Harrisonville, and encourage all citizens to take the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge and learn more about the risk associated with cellphone use and not buckling up while driving. Okay? So we're going to have you all come up here, and we're going to give a photo, and then we're going to let you guys talk about the program a little bit. A great program, because I'll tell you, distracted driving. Just about every day that I drive down the highway going anywhere, you get behind somebody 10 miles per hour under the speed limit, causing a congestion, slowing people down, very dangerous. You pass them, and what are they doing? They're on their cellphone texting. So a great program. Come on in here, sir. You're part of this too, and we'll present this. How about we give somebody in the middle of this? All right? And then I'll let you talk. Let's go and get the photo. All right, so I'm going to turn the mic over to you, and then you can pass it on down live.
All right. Welcome, and thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. I'm Officer Ramsey. I'm the advisor for the Traction team here at Harrisonville High School. Traction has been around for several years. It's been, used to be called the Seatbelt Challenge, and that's where basically they just challenge you to buckle up. Now we're going a step further. We're talking about how you can be driving without distractions, and that would be with the cellphone, eating, different things like that. So this year, we have 14 members from the high school. We have a few of them here tonight. Some of them are a little gun shy to talk in front of people, but we're going to work on that part of it. But the other ones are great. So but we have a good group of students, and I can't be more proud of them. So I'll pass it down and let them talk.
I was expecting them to introduce themselves. But hi, my name is Lucas Stavini, and I am currently the president of Traction. I was voted into office like a month ago, so forgive me if I'm a little bit new to this all. I got introduced to Traction three years ago by my brother, Court, who was also a president of Traction. And he really got me inspired to, you know, take driving seriously and not be on my phone and be doing other things other than driving, because really that is what you should be focused on whenever you get into that car. And so my favorite thing about Traction is going to be the reunions we have every year where different Traction teams from all over the state come together and just talk about, hey, this is what we've done, and this is what we're going to plan on doing next year. And it's really fun to see, you know, what other teams are doing and get excited about, you know, traffic safety, which kind of seems kind of silly to be getting something, I don't know, so serious and excited about, but I don't know, it's fun.
Hi, I'm Audrey Coffey. This is my third year in Traction, and I'm the public relations officer for our club. One thing I was just thinking about, as you was reading the proclamation, we heard all the statistics, like this percentage of people die from, you know, you hear all the numbers, and that's important. But when we go to these conferences with other Traction teams, and we learn about things together as a Traction team, that it's not just the numbers. Like, we talk to real people that have been in these accidents and have, they've had their lives affected, they've had, you know, a loved one killed, or they've been paralyzed or anything like that from the consequences of dangerous driving. So that kind of puts it all into perspective about why it's so important, just that kind of emotional toll that it can take on people. So I just hope that by being part of this club, we can minimize that damage that it causes to people, you know, do our part.
I think it's important that now, when it goes back down, that each one of you introduce yourselves, because it's very important for people to understand why you're there, because this is a very important thing to be recognized for. So please acknowledge and give your name and what you're there for.
My name is Ma Mozer, and this is my second year in Traction. And I just think it's like a great way to kind of raise awareness. And people don't realize the toll that it takes on, like, everybody around you distracted driving. It doesn't just affect your life, but it affects everybody around you. So I think it's just a great way to, like, tell people that and show people that, hearing stories, people that are affected by it. I think it's just a really great opportunity.
Hi, I'm Abby Coffey, and this is my first year in Traction. So I'm pretty new to it, but I'm really excited to be a part of it this year.
Hi, I'm Grace Becker. This is my first year in Traction, and I just really want to make s- I just really think it's really important to make sure people are understanding the consequences of your actions on the road.
CNN wasn't so bad.
I'm Lacey Crespo. This is my first year in Traction as well. I've seen it all around the school and heard a lot about it, and I just thought it would be important to be a part of it since I'm driving now too. So, and I want to help people spread awareness about driving safety.
I thought you were just passing the buck all the way down to the end, but you were planning to come back, so great job. And thank you, guys, again, for all that you do. It is very important what you do, so.
Thank you for the example you're setting for the rest of your classmates, too. Thank you.
All right. Thanks again, sir. All right, next up, we have the approval of minutes. We have the Board of Aldermen regular meeting from October 7th, 2024. And those were in your packet.
I move we approve, or I'll second.
All right, a motion from Alderman Franklin, second from Alderman Fauch, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those stand approved. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen work session from October 7th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Alderman Turner, second from Alderman Franklin, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those stand as written. First agenda item we have is Council Bill 58.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville amending the adopted economic development incentives policy for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I just wanted to present to you the possibility of adding to the adopted economic development incentives policy an enhanced enterprise zone tax abatement application, as well as a acceptance letter of the benefits from the enhanced enterprise zone request. And so I presented those to you this evening. There's not really too much discussion necessary. Just wanted to direct your attention to the application for a moment. Couple of items I put in there for the application. In order for us to better collect information on the applicant as well as understanding their business and also the industry they may be in, is on, partway down, it speaks to the primary business activity. And so it could be production, they could be doing processing. I've inquired, you know, what type of processing. Food processing, this processing will be different than chemical processing. Will require different power suppression potentially, different electrical load, may as those types of things. So it's good to understand what type of processing they're doing on site in our community. Also, what is the purpose for the project? Is it going to be an expansion, a relocation? Are they consolidating facilities? That type of thing, I think, is also good for us to understand. Are they trying to get in a proximity and access markets, raw materials, suppliers? Or is there some kind of a talent they're looking for in the workforce? Or are there some kind of efficiencies they're trying to achieve if they were to locate here or to expand as an existing operator? Then the last one is the cause of growth. Is it a new technology? Do they have new markets? Do they have new customers, new products they're putting out there that might increase demand, that type of thing? It's good for us to understand what kind of transition they're going to, going through, what kind of trends might be impacting their decision to locate in our community possibly, and then putting forth a request for some real property tax abatement request to assist in that project. So it's beneficial in my perspective, not only for staff, but also for the NS Enterprise Zone Board when they're considering the request, then for the Board of Aldermen when they're approving any recommendations to offer real property tax abatements. Then there's also the acceptance letter that they have to execute along with the city that says, we understand the benefits that are being offered, and we do accept those and agree to those. So I just want to request your consideration to include these in the economic development incentive policy. There will be Exhibit F and Exhibit G. I didn't modify anything else within the document.
Any questions for Mr. Clark?
About the schedule of abatements, we kind of hit this a long time ago on the Ifield project. And that was set by the Board of Aldermen, I believe, what I was told.
That is correct. So when the community made an application, and this was prior to my arrival here, but back in 2010, 2009, 2010, they applied to the Missouri Department of Economic Development, who went through the process of designating an enhanced enterprise zone based on certain criteria they looked at with respect to demographics, population, poverty levels, unemployment rates, those types of things at that point in time. But it was up to the community to identify the targeted industries, which is included in the resolution that was adopted when it was designated. And that's based on industry that the community thought would be beneficial to the community, but they didn't want to maybe target other industries that they wouldn't find so beneficial. The other aspect that we were required to do was to identify the amount of abatement and the term of abatement. And so that was approved at that point in time. The community does have the capacity to change the abatement levels being offered if they choose. The state wouldn't do that. We cannot change the boundaries. That was established by the state. We can change the incentive percentages based on whatever criteria we feel is appropriate, since it is a local level incentive. The property tax abatement is local level. The state's not granting the abatement, the community is. Is that your question?
Well, it was kind of that, because you may not remember the conversation then, but I was newer to the board and trying to maybe carve a little bit of a bigger pie on the end for Harrisonville and reschedule or change the way that it was scheduled. And I asked then about how it was scheduled or how it was determined. And I was just curious.
So during the application process-
How to change that, and if we changed it, what would be the effects of the change either way?
The change, like I say, can be done at a local level with the exception of boundaries. We cannot change the boundaries of the enhanced enterprise zone. But as far as the percentage that is being offered for the real property tax abatement, that would go through the process. It would be up to the board if they want it to go through the NS Enterprise Zone Board first and get their recommendation, and then come back to the Board of Aldermen. Ultimately, the Board of Aldermen would have to approve those changes, and they'd have to notify the Department of Economic Development if changes are made on that.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Clark?
Thank you.
If not, I'll entertain a motion. It's a resolution.
I move to approve the resolution.
Got a Alderman Fauch moved to approve, second from Alderman Mills. Roll call, please.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused. Alderman Milner is excused.
Okay, Council Bill 58 is now Resolution 2024-27. Next up, we have a Council Bill 59.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a tow policy agreement with Jase Southland Tow, Miller Tow Service, All Pro Tow, and such other tow companies as are willing to meet the requirements of the agreement.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Ratliff, the mayor and the board. This evening, we are proposing to add All Pro Tow to the current tow policy agreement after the approval of the special use permit later this evening, and then they'll have to get their business license. But also, a change that we're making is we're changing the non-preference toes from a weekly rotation to a single tow rotation.
Yeah, you're going to have to explain that one.
Something's been asked. I thought maybe you just knew. So we've been doing a weekly rotation to where Sunday through Sunday, at a certain time, one tow company would get all of the toes. The CAT system, RMS system that we've switched to, allows it to where we'll just kick the next tow company up, which will make it easier on the dispatchers, and we're hoping for less errors, because they had to make an effort to make sure that somebody changed it.
Gotcha.
So we're hoping that this will make it easier on our dispatchers.
Gotcha, definitely. That makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have you had any problems with any of these tow comp- I know All Pro, they're new, but have you had any problems with the other two tow companies in the city?
I've been, like, in regard to this in general, or-
No, just in-
We've not had any problems that would make us not continue using them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, it is a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson, with a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Milner are excused.
All right, Council Bill 59 is now Resolution 2024-28. Next, we have second reading of Council Bill 50.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri amending Article 1 under Chapter 210 Animal Regulations of the Harrisonville Municipal Code and establishing an effective date.
All right, Christina.
This is the second reading. I've had no additional comments. I will note that I did note this morning that the wrong ordinance was in the packet. The correct one was the one that was after the staff report. I don't know, Daniel, did you send something out on that? The title of the ordinances are the same. We do have the correct version, I think, one hand for the signatures. And again, the correct one was the one that was in the packet after the staff report from the previous meeting.
Were you able to review that?
Yes.
Does anybody want to review that?
I got it off the website.
So the one on the website now is correct, right? If you can pass that down.
Yes, sir.
We'll just make sure that-
While you're doing that, Christina, I'd like to thank you for all your work on this. I know I was kind of, just made it difficult, but thank you very much for all your work. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, that was the main difference was-
Right.
Because we had discussed taking the natural temperature.
Yeah, I thought we did. On the website, we have the temperatures.
Yeah, so that one hasn't been included.
Yeah, in this version, the temperature is not specifically called out. There are direct references to state statute and process for what to do in those instances.
This is the second reading, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson, with a second from Alderman Chaney. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Milner is excused. Alderman Dorhoff is absent.
All right, Council Bill 50 is now Ordinance 3707. Next up, we have the second reading of Council Bill 45.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, vacating a railroad spur right of way covering proposed Lot 5 of Enterprise Business Park with railroad spur serving UFP Industries Incorporated and establishing an effective date.
All right, Mr. Clark.
Mayor and Board, this is simply a second reading unless there are any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Clark on that? I didn't know if they came to any resolution with Church and Dwight after-
Not as of yet, no. There's been no resolution between UFP and Church and Dwight, is my understanding from the communication between the parties.
And so if we vacate it, where's it go to or what happens to it?
Once we vacate this right of way, there's still several other title commitments. We've pushed out the closing date to the end of the year. The proposal is that the city's going to sell the rail spur to UFP as per our agreement. That is what would happen. This is just one step and still several more steps to go until we finally close sale of the rail spur.
That's what I thought. I mean, we're supposed to sell it, but we're just vacating before.
Yeah, we have to vacate the right of way as part of the process of selling the rail spur to UFP.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, there's no other questions. This is the second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Alderman Franklin, with a second from Alderman Fauch. Roll call, please.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Milner is excused. Alderman Dorhoff is absent.
All right, Council Bill 45 is Ordinance 3708. Next up, we have Council Bill 54.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a special use permit for the use of a tow lot on property located at 1505 Clearwater Drive in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Again, this is second reading. I've had no additional comments or feedback on the applications. And so any questions?
Any further questions on this one?
No, I mean, this is an existing tow lot. They just didn't have the special use permit.
Correct.
And now we're just making it compliant?
Correct.
Yep. This is the second reading, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Alderman Turner to approve.
Second.
Second from Alderman Chaney. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Milner is excused. Alderman Dorhoff is absent.
All right, Council Bill 54 is now Ordinance 3709. Next, we have Council Bill, the second reading Council Bill 55.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a special use permit for the use of a tow lot on property located at 402 Cedar Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Again, this is second reading. The end user is new. The property owners staying the same. We've actually previously had a special use on this property for a different user, but since the property owner's staying the same and they've just changed out leases, we've talked to them about it. It should actually be you as the applicant. So make it a little bit cleaner, hopefully, moving forward as well.
Who will be the user on this one?
All Pro Tow. Any questions?
Any questions for Christina? If not, it's the second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Alderman Chaney to approve.
Second.
Second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Milner is excused. Alderman Dorhoff is absent.
All right, Council Bill 55 is now Ordinance 3710. Next up, we have the second reading of Council Bill 57.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a rezoning from RP 1 to RP 2 for approximately seven acres to allow for 24 duplex lots and a preliminary development plan for the proposed Cedar Creek development containing 24 duplex lots and 195 single-family residential lots on property located south of Parkwood South and north of 267th Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Again, this is second reading. We've heard nothing from any of the residents concerning this. We've had no additional input, phone or email. There's been an additional conversation with the applicant working on development agreement. They're going to try to fine tune some of their numbers. It's going to go back to referring the ordinance number. So I told them, I said, that has to come back to this board before it's finally approved, but we can get this piece through and kind of come back around to finalize that. So any questions?
Any questions for Christina on this?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, got a motion from Alderman Mills.
Second.
Second from Alderman Fauch. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Milner is excused. Alderman Dorhoff is absent.
All right, Council Bill 57 is now Ordinance 3711. Next up, I'm going to open a public hearing on the annexation of approximately eight acres of adjacent territory owned by David A. and Lisa K. Warden. That's open now. Christina?
Thank you. So the property owners, David and Lisa Warren, have requested voluntary annexation of approximately eight acres of tract of land located north of the Twin Pines Golf Course and west of Chrissy Bend, which is part of the Katy Trails subdivision. The property is bordered by the corporate boundaries of the City of Harrisonville to the south and the east, those two areas I mentioned. Utilities exist in the vicinity since the property is adjacent to Chrissy Bend and Katy Trails, and Public Works has verified that there are adequate utilities for service to an additional residence for this property. So the property is currently undeveloped agricultural- So the property is currently undeveloped agricultural land and exceeds the minimum size for the agriculture district, so we're recommending that it be zoned accordingly, be zoned ag. So staff is recommending approval of the requested voluntary annexation and recommends the property be zoned ag, ag district.
Perfect, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this? No? Yep. Come on up, ma'am.
I'm just, I'm Carol in the American Party interrupters. I just wanted to say that the owners aren't here if you do have any-
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. I was going to say, I know who you are, but you have to introduce yourselves, so. Any questions for Christina?
Yes, I-
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What's, what's your intent? I know it's going to be rezoned as agricultural. You've got eight acres there. Do you plan on, if you could, could you step up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you could just, yeah, give us your name and address and-
24001 East State Route, Beverly.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
So what is your intent? I know it's going to be rezoned when it comes into the city's agriculture.
We'll sell it.
Okay, you're going to, you're planning on selling it?
Yes.
Are you going to try to rezone it before you sell it or-
No.
You're just going to try to sell it as is?
Uh-huh.
Okay. As, as ag.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions for Christina? No? Nobody else? Then I am going to close that public hearing as closed now, and we're going to do the first reading of Council Bill 60.
An ordinance of the Board of Alderman of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, providing for the extension of the city limits by annexing approximately eight acres of adjacent territory owned by David A. and Lisa K. Warden located north of Twin Pines Country Club and west of Chrissy Bend into the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, establishing the zoning as C-2 Service Business District and establishing an effective date.
All right, thank you. So we'll bring that back for a second reading on November 4th at our November 4th meeting.
It's fine. We will fix that on the second reading.
I was going to say, I swear, I thought I fixed that. So it's why, how is that still wrong?
Yeah. I believe she's referring to the fact that it says C2 Service Business District, and since I didn't hear that discussed, I assume that's what they do not want it rezoned as, so we can change the title of the second reading of the ordinance. There's nothing more that needs to be done tonight regarding that.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you. All right. Next up is Alderman and committee reports. Let's start with Alderman Chaney.
I don't have much. Little League football's over. It was a great season. I would hope that anybody that has their sons or even daughters, there's some girls that played this year, encourage them to get out and play and support Harrisonville football, which is a great passion of mine, so that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, did you have a good show this year?
We didn't do, didn't do too bad. We went 500, made the playoffs, so supposedly, from what I heard, they've not made the playoffs in a handful of years. So it was a good season. The kids had a great time, but we lost our, our playoff game and didn't get to go to the Super Bowl this year.
We appreciate it. Yep, thanks, sir. Alderman Franklin?
Yes, as far as Parks and Recreation go, the AARP sidewalk is complete. I believe they are going to be seeding that for grass probably later on. That was a community grant challenge that we received in the amount of $15,000. So that is complete. Looks really nice out there if you've been out there. There was a good crowd this last Sunday for the ET movie out by the amphitheater, the farm, so had a nice crowd there that was around 50 people. And it looks like we are going to be waiting for the spring to re, no, paint, I'm sorry, the outdoor pool. They've already got the water drained and taken care of, so it will be springtime before they will be repainting inside the pool. We had friends sit there and hosted a cornhole tournament this last Saturday at the community center. We did really well. We had 18 signed up. Seven of them were there. We made $1,250. And I think everybody had a good time. Alex Loken, who works at the Parks and Rec, did a great job with the cornhole tournament and team sidelines, and he did all the brackets. He did a fantastic job. Everybody enjoyed him. He was friendly and knowledgeable, and I think everybody had a really good time, so we got that done. And then on the doggy dive, which was done in August, we finally got some final numbers. We had a little over $6,000 in the dog park account, and we did the doggy dive, and I think we came close to making maybe around $1,800, $2,000 there. Grant sat there and asked the park board if they would not be willing to donate $2,000 for the park shades, the park shade structures. And then we had those gentlemen sat there and said he would match that. So that was $2,000. So we hit our goal at $12,000 and have Mr. Bill Mills to thank you for the matching funds. So that's my report for today.
Alderman Franklin, thank you. Anytime I start having a pity party, that how busy I am, I just have to think about all that you do because it's crazy.
Well, not all that crazy. It helps to have people that tell me what's going on and keeps me up to date, so.
Well, we appreciate all you do for sure. Thank you. Alderman Davidson?
Again, I just want to thank the traction group. It's, it's really great to see young adults in our school system that are promoting things of safety and especially with driving because that becomes obviously an important thing when you get into high school or turn 16. And unfortunately, we have a lot of accidents, and when you have distracted driving adding to that age and inexperience, it can really cause, be a cause for disaster. So it's great to see these young men and women out here that are, that are supportive of, of that, and setting that example in our high schools. So again, I wanted to thank the traction committee and also Officer Ramsey for his work with us.